Alright, good evening, everyone. You can rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands our nation under God, indivisible, in the unity and justice of all.
Have a roll call, please.
Mr. Dixon?
Here.
Mrs. Diglio?
Here.
Mrs. LaFois?
Here.
Mrs. Teetz?
Here.
Mr. Mayor Kuz?
I am here. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this regular meeting was given to the two newspapers of record and posted on the official bulletin board at January 5th, 2024. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the March 25th, 2024 regular meeting minutes.
I will make a motion to approve the March 25th, 2024 regular meeting.
Second.
Any changes or discussion needed?
Nothing that I saw.
Okay, a roll call?
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Kuz?
Yes. Also entertain a motion to approve the March 25th, 2024 executive session minutes?
I'll offer the minutes, sorry, for the March 25th executive session.
Okay, a second from Mr. Dixon. Any comments or discussion, changes? Alright. A roll call, please?
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Kuz?
Can I do a partial abstention? For the first half? Or just a total abstention?
State you're voting in favor of the minutes as it relates to the-
The portion that I was in attendance for.
You were in attendance and he abstains as to the other portion.
As Mr. Bernstein said.
Or a partial abstention.
That would do. At this point in the meeting, the town council welcomes comments from any member of the public on any topic. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit the opportunity for everyone who wishes to be heard, speakers are asked to take one turn at the microphone and to please limit their comments to three minutes. The clerk will keep time. If reading from a prepared statement, please provide a copy and email a copy to the clerk's office after making your comments, so it may be properly reflected in the minutes. Council members may choose to comment after the entire public portion has concluded. Please identify yourself and spell your last name for the record. As is customary, we'll begin with anyone in person who would like to speak. Not seeing anyone will transition to Zoom. If anyone on Zoom would like to speak, please indicate so by raising your hand. Not seeing anyone, we'll close the first public session. And we'll move on to council and manager reports, beginning with Mr. Russo.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items that we have in your packet and for the record, the proclamation for April being Child Abuse Prevention Month. I want to congratulate the nominees for the Sussex County Chamber Awards Luncheon, which will be held on April 25th. And last but not least, this Thursday is our 160th birthday in the town of Newton, so happy birthday to the incorporation of the town of Newton. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russo. Councilmember Dixon?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Diglio?
I just want to congratulate the Newton Robotics team on their success at the, um, the High Valley Competitions.
Thank you. Councilmember Teetz?
I, just, uh, I'll, uh, two recognitions, uh, for the past couple of weeks. So, the Easter egg hunt, um, once again, I came through with the weather and it was a nice sunny morning and, um, so, good job by Danielle and Barbara and they had a lot of high school volunteers, um, and myself and Deputy Mayor LaFois were there, um, so we got, you know, uh, to participate and, um, and get to talk to a lot of townspeople and, um, it's just a really popular event and a lot of, uh, kudos and nice comments to, um, both Danielle and Barbara. And, uh, I think most people are looking forward to it next year, so it just seems to get bigger and better each year. And, uh, you know, unfortunately after that, um, there was a, uh, fairly large structure fire within the town of Newton and, um, you know, thankful no one was hurt. And, um, you know, kudos again to our fire department, police department, DPW, the water department was there, obviously the, the first aid squad was there, um, all the mutual aid agencies, um, it was really a, uh, you know, sad event, but it was also like, good to see everyone in action and see why you all train and do what you do because of what you might have to do and that was definitely in the forefront last Saturday, so, good job by all and that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Teetz. Deputy Mayor LaFois?
Thank you. Um, so last meeting, I recognize the, um, Newton High School FBLA. And this meeting, I would like to shout out the, um, Paulstead Middle School FBLA, Future Business Leaders of America Club. Um, they launched a community service project centered around, uh, national suicide awareness. And so the, um, Paulstead FBLA members developed a kindness challenge and their goal was to tell their fellow classmates that they are valued and that they are loved and to spread positivity, acceptance and kindness as well as, uh, again promote national suicide health prevention. Um, they're going to be presenting their projects at the 2024 NJ FBLA State Middle School Leadership Conference. Actually today, um, they presented, so looking forward to hearing about that. And then, um, just of special note, this club is the first FBLA program ever chartered at Paulstead and the only middle school program in Sussex County, so Newton, New Way, and just want to congratulate the students there and, and everyone who participated. I'd also like to, um, thank and recognize School Resource Officer Justin Bellis for issuing, um, some more positivity tickets. So this month, in March, actually, he issued five Paulstead Middle School students on behalf of the Newton Police Department, um, positivity tickets and, uh, just as a reminder, this is, um, an initiative that was created with the Center of Prevention and Counseling and it's used by the police department to reward children who are observed by the police engaging in positive behavior. Uh, just wanted to also make note that on Wednesday, April 24th, from four to six PM, there are going to be fun, interactive activities for parents and children available at, um, the Family Health Expo, which is going to be held at Project Self-Sufficiency. Again, that's April 24th from four to six. It's a free event. There are going to be representatives from, um, Project Self-Sufficiency, but also local health organizations, um, to discuss, to discuss lots of resources for the health and wellbeing of children and families in our community. Lots of presentations, um, tables to visit. I know that the, uh, Newton Volunteer First Aid and Rescue Squad is going to be there. Uh, offering ambulance tours for the kids. They'll be doing blood pressure checks, um, administered by the county public hurt, uh, health nurse. Um, one family in attendance will be randomly selected to receive a $100 gift cards, uh, towards groceries. There's going to be pizza provided. Um, and again, the health expo, the family health expo is free and open to the public. Um, for more information and to find out all of the entities that are going to be there presenting and providing information, please visit productselfsufficiency.org. Um, as, uh, Councilwoman Teetz, uh, reported, we had a lot of fun at the annual Town of Newton Easter Egg Hunt at Newton High School. So thanks to the high school for providing the facilities and it was great to see so many high school students out volunteering for the morning. It was a beautiful morning weather-wise. Thanks, Michelle. Um, I also would like to thank Danielle and Barbara and all the recreation committee members. It was so fun to see them having fun, executing one of their events, which was great. Um, and when we went down to the Newton High School cafeteria afterwards, we heard lots of comments and, um, as the children and the parents were participating in activities, lots of comments about just the activity and the day and everyone getting excited for Easter the following day. Um, they were able to take pictures, uh, with Easter bunnies. It was beautifully decorated. Just, I mean, I agree with Michelle. I think it gets better and better every year. Um, and then also, uh, want to thank all the first responders and emergency personnel who responded to the fire afterwards at 39 Hall Street. I think at one point, we counted 13 mutual aid responders, um, from all over the county. Took about four hours to knock down and, um, and then the first aid squad and investigators were on the scene for several hours after that. Um, continuing with their work and doing what they need to do. Um, as Michelle said, thankfully, everyone was able to evacuate the building and then the Red Cross was able to respond and to help our residents. Um, you know, again, coming from, uh, growing up in an area where, um, our first responders were paid responders in, uh, Los Angeles, Orange County in California, it, it just, it's remarkable to me that the men and women that were charging in, um, were by far mostly volunteers and, um, as Michelle said, trained endlessly to unfortunately have to use their expertise and skills in, in cases like this. So, um, just a great response all the way around. Uh, so thank you for that and I think that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Uh, the only thing that I will add is, uh, just to read the Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation into the record. Child Abuse Prevention Month, April 2024. Whereas child abuse and neglect is a complex and ongoing problem in our society affecting many children in Sussex County. And whereas every child is entitled to be loved, cared for, nurtured, feel secure and be free from verbal, sexual, emotional and physical abuse and neglect. And whereas child abuse and the child abuse and neglect not only directly harms children, but also increases the likelihood of criminal behavior, substance abuse, health problems and risky behavior. And whereas the effects of child abuse are felt by communities as a whole and need to be addressed by the entire community. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships among families, social service agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies and the business community. Now we, now therefore we, the mayor and town council of the town Newton hereby proclaim April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month and call upon our citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities and businesses to increase their participation in the efforts to support families thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live. When I move to the consent agenda, all items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the town council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Mr. Russo, if you wouldn't mind a rundown, please?
Yes, sir. 108, we have the correct term limits for appointments made on Resolution 94. 109, reappoint members to the Housing Authority. 110, disclosure contract to Trojan Technologies. Resolution releasing the performance guarantees for Thor Labs, developer of block 1104 lot 21. 112 fireworks display at Memory Park for Newton Day. 113, credit due water and sewer account. 114 zoning officer services we're providing to Hardeston for a period of 90 days to help them out. 115 is support for NJ DOT Traffic Regulation Order, which we're required to do. 116 is the award of a contract for Phillips Price as conflict planner. 117 allows us to read the budget by title. 118 is self-exam of the budget resolution. 119 adopts procedures for the Memory Park Boardwalk Connector Project. 122 bills and vouchers and one application for Fire Department Andre Hewitt and one resolution off consent.
Thank you, Mr. Russo. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I will second the motion.
Any discussion or items that need to be removed? Alright, uh, roll call, please?
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Kuz?
You standing from checks number 10450 and 10496. Yes, otherwise. If the Resolution 120 dash 2024, Resolution to amend the employment agreement between the town of Newton and Police Chief Steve Van Newland, I entertain a motion to approve.
I'll offer Resolution 120 dash 2024.
There's a second?
I will second Resolution 120 dash 2024.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Dixon?
No.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Kuz?
I abstain. Well, now move to the second open to the public session. The rules of the first apply. As is customary, we'll begin with anyone in person who'd like to speak. Not seeing anyone in person will move to Zoom. Please indicate if you'd like to speak by raising your hand. Not seeing anyone, we'll close the second public session this evening and move on to the hearing of the 2024 budget.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, you will all email the PDF copy of the presentation, which I will put on the screen. Right, just note for the record, this is Monica's last budget, but I understand her favorite municipal budget that she's worked on in her career. So thank you, Monica, for all your hard work on this. I know. No, it wasn't an easy budget. So I'll jump to page two fiscal facts, my favorite dollar from Randolph Township, County of Sussex, County Library, Open Space, Board of Ed and Town of Newton for 2023, Board of Ed 50% of your tax dollar, Newton 34.74, County of Sussex 14, Library 1 and Open Space 0.07. Appropriations 23 versus 24 for 24, we have 5.991742 million for salaries. 2 million, 2,503,446 health dental vision workers comp. 1,253,335 for pensions, FICA and SUI 288. Retirement, LoSAP accumulated absence 143,326. Then we have general operating expenses 2,382,549, debt capital deferred 2,265,267, tax appeals 18,000, the RUT 473,396 and grants as of this moment in time 293,877. Total 15,612,938. Top 10 increases by dollar amount. We have the finance SNW. We have group insurance, other expenses. We have police SNW. We have CENTCOM SNW, streets and roads, snow removal SNW, animal control, accumulated absences, swimming pool SNW and utilities. Revenue history, we list for the past five years. You see the breakdown. We have state aid 1.1 million, local fees, fines, interest 877. 2.2 million utilization of fund balance, 185 delinquent taxes, municipal taxes 9,593,181. Inter locals 228,433 grants, and then we have special items of revenue totaling 15,612,938. We did complete the reassessment this year. The net value taxable has gone up to 1 billion 41,882,244. The average assessed residential property has gone from 185,638 to 318,778. So with the budget you see before you, the average residential property taxes will go from 2,0899 to 2,0935, which is an increase of only $3 a month. Tax rate history gets a little lost in the weeds here, you know, pardon the font, but subtotal general revenue 6 million, raised by taxes 9.5. Budget as introduced, you see the tax point and then you see the net value taxable, tax point, tax rate, et cetera. Estimated municipal tax increase, we just mentioned for 2024, the average increase is $36. Last year it was approximately 61, $60. Fund balance. We have our largest fund balance at 4.4 million and then we have the utilization of 2.2 and the balance of 2159. Revenue comparison. Lot of small font, um, so you have the 2013 to 2024. You see the breakdown of the fund balance, the energy receipts tax, municipal relief, Garden State Trust, Homeland Security, and all those are listed initially. Then you have public and private grants, other miscellaneous, delinquent taxes. Subtotal, the aforementioned local taxes, total budget revenues, 1.1 million state aid, which is 7.3% against the total budget. And then you have the breakdown of the fund balance anticipated and the balance after the budget is introduced and adopted. Some capital projects in the current end of things. So we have the Capital Improvement Fund, which is, you know, cash we're able to use for projects. We talked about the Boardwalker Connector, Boardwalk Connector, Memory Park. We have the grant of 749, debt authorized 140. Then we have Duma, Duma, Valley View, Babbitt. 210, 158, grant 51,000 debt. HVAC estimate probably low, but snapshot in time, we're still working on other estimates, 350. Firehouse One renovations, 800,000. This is the debt added on to what we've already budgeted and that's base bid and alternate one. And we have our pre-construction meeting coming up Thursday. Utility truck, I know there was discussions about this. We're including this in the capital plan, which we have to do, but the council can decide at a later date to fund or not to fund said utility truck. And then we have the OEM system, the Integrated Communication System, which is the upgrades that Dan Finkel recommended. That's 125,000. And we are seeking a grant through Congressman Godheimer's Community Project Funding Program for that 125. Then we have our CIF, which is cash for projects. We have the down payment. And then this totals the 437. So we have the memory park electrical and we have various pool improvements we discussed. We have the Liberty Street crosswalks provided by our audience member sitting in the back row. We have the mower for DPW. We have musical building facilities, upgrades, renovations, furniture, which is annual plane endorsement being done by Jessica on the other side of the room. Then we have cameras and video recorders for the police department, the drone that we talked about, the DB vehicle and then redevelopment. Water sewer, 6,225,691. We have 2,768 accounts. We have the rate structure, which increases every year that we did by ordinance. We have the fund balance utilization 1.2 million. We have the rents. We have miscellaneous and then we have reserves. We have interest and costs on assessment, so we have the total budget and then you see the fund balance anticipated and the utilization against what we had January 1st. Capital projects, lengthy list, lot going on that Monica's been managing with the engineers and staff. Improvement fund and outlay. Then we have the truck replacements for 160, pumps and motors sewer plant 125. We still have funds possibly for the study and mitigation of the TCHM. We have the 2 million for new sweepers and new sewer jet vac, hydrant and valve replacement repair. Then we have the lead service line project. We have dam site three, that's future. We have the sewer line upgrades. We have the first stage check valves at the sewer plant, which is being coordinated by PSNS. We have the Montana Crossing, Sparta Glen 115, the lower Glen Lake blow-off valve we have for 300. We have the morning water main upgrade project. We're doing two this year. We're doing New Hampshire and Mason Ave. Then we have the cleaning of High Street tank in the Clear Wells. And then we have the Marsh Lake Gate House, which is for the low lake level pumping, RBCs at the sewer plant. And then we have the upgrade of valves and piping water treatment plant, which is being managed by Fred's firm. And just to conclude, we've concluded the budget process. I want to thank all, you know, Monica especially, all joking aside for her last, you know, budget, a lot of hard work went into this budget. Um, I want to thank her and the department heads and the staff for their assistance in putting together these documents. It's my belief that these appropriations and revenues as contained in the budget will help us meet the demand for services. It's fiscally responsible and it ensures the wellbeing of the government's preserved. And we always talk about excellence in governance, right? Achieving our mission for taxpayers and businesses and residents. I'm confident this budget meets their expectations as well as the expectations of the governing body. And as always, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to serve as town manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russo. Uh, at this point, we'll open the, uh, 2024 budget hearing up to the public. Anyone in person would like to comment on the budget? Alright, not seeing anyone, we'll move to Zoom. If anyone on Zoom would like to offer public comment on this year's budget, please indicate so by raising your hand. If we're not seeing anyone, we will close the public comment period. And close the hearing on the 2024 budget. I will entertain a motion to act on the adoption, I'm sorry, Resolution 121 dash 2024, the adoption of the 2024 municipal and water and sewer utility budget.
I will make the motion to act on Resolution 121 dash 2024.
I'll second.
Any comment or discussion?
I know Tom ran all that down in about five minutes, which is very impressive, but I know it probably took about 500 hours of planning by Monica, department heads and everyone else. So I know I've mentioned this in previous meetings, but a good job to all of, to everyone on that.
And for anyone observing, this was not the first time that the budget has been presented to us. Uh, there was a completely separate, uh, budget, uh, meeting that we held going through each item line by line, um, to help take the budget that was created by the staff and make a few adjustments in order to bring it to us tonight. So again, good work to everyone. Strong work. Thank you, Monica, for all of your hard work over the many years that you've been here. And we'll miss you.
JP, you took the words right out of my mouth. I was just going to say, um, you know, the, I, the budget hearings I think are incredibly valuable for us to hear from the department heads and from Tom and Monica about how and why the budget is created as it is. Um, so Monica, thank you for the several, several, several hours, uh, working with Tom and, and everyone to make this work. Um, it's amazing that our the va- the values are now, the property values now exceed a billion dollars in the town of Newton and, um, the increase in the average household value, um, finally coming to terms with the market, um, all while, you know, achieving a very moderate, um, tax increase and actually below what we thought we were going to be, um, approving when we walked out of the budget hearings. Um, so thank you for all the hard work and I just wanted to, JP and I were able to see the mock drone at work after the fire was extinguished. A detectives, uh, Finkel and Vex and some officers were there and were able to launch the drone and show us how it can be utilized, um, in an, on an emergency basis or even in a search and rescue basis. And it was pretty impressive. Um, so that was part of the budget presentation that we had from the police department about the licensure and the equipment and how they run it and how they intend to use it. And, um, so it was neat to see it in action and I'm glad that we got to see that, uh, have the ability to take still pictures and live and, I, I mean, it was amazing to be able to see the level of detail to the extent that we saw a cat running around kind of behind the building, um, in, in great detail along with, um, part of the structure, which would not have been permissible for anybody to go in and see, um, after the fire. So just wanted to come out of that. Thanks.
Any other comments, discussion?
I just want to thank Monica and Tom and all the department heads for all that they did to work, make this budget work and to bring it down to $3 a month increase for the residents.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion to act on the budget. I'm sorry, we already did that. I'll ask for a roll call, please. It was too long of a discussion.
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Kuz?
Yes. Move on to any final or additional council or manager comments? Right? We have one item, maybe two items sort of to, for discussion this evening. Uh, a draft ordinance amending zoning section 320 dash four regarding maximum bedrooms for multifamily units and section 320 dash 23 regarding parking space requirements for multifamily dwellings. And for that discussion, I believe we have our town planner, Ms. Jessica Caldwell of J Caldwell and Associates.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, so we dropped in an ordinance to address a couple of issues that have come to our attention recently through some signing board applications where we've had some proposals for apartments with, uh, several bedrooms and some of the concerns that come up is will they, there be stacking in units like this where you have multiple families potentially living in a unit because it's so large? Or even if it's multiple adults, the way that our parking standards apply, it's not necessarily by bedroom. So there could end up being numerous cars, vehicles generated by the size of apartments. So it's kind of a two-pronged issue. One was having, uh, larger units that we felt wouldn't be sustainable in a public health and safety way for multifamily units and then the parking concerns for some of these larger units. So essentially it came down to two proposed changes. One is to restrict new multifamily dwellings to three bedrooms or less for any new, and that's only for three units or more in a structure. So one and two family structures, which would still be treated as single family could, you know, continue to have more than, uh, three bedrooms. And then the, the second issue is to apply, we have sort of incentivized, uh, parking standards over time. We have um, tried to incentivize having, uh, more conversions and some especially like upper floors on Spring Street to apartments and bring more people into the downtown and things like that and lowering parking standards, um, slightly in order to incentivize that and recognizing that we have public parking in the downtown. Uh, but for units that have more than three bedrooms, we fill those incentivized parking standards, um, Um, aren't serving the public good because they could end up really having a lot more vehicles and. People can't park on the streets during the winter and it becomes problems in neighborhoods. So we propose to apply residential site improvement standards, which is a statewide standard. For any units over three, three bedrooms or more, and that does increase. I know the parking requirement for some of these larger units. And and that's actually the most we can apply. We can't apply more than that RSI standard. So those are the two changes, um, just based on what we've been seeing at Planning Board. Um, just seeing some issues come up and some feedback from zoning officers as well.
Thank you. Any council members have any thoughts or discussion, comments on the two proposed changes? Any objections to how it's proposed?
So JP and I actually saw this come, um. As an issue kind of before the planning board that are in a recent application where there um was a property owner looking to establish. Three or four apartments and one of the apartments had, I believe it was five bedrooms.
Five bedrooms.
Yeah, five bedrooms. Um, and it just came into question the amount, the number of physical. Could actually be in this apartment based on not just the five bedrooms, but the sizes of the proposed bedrooms. Um, and then that's really where this, the genesis of this conversation and talking with Tom and and having Jessica take a look at the ordinance.
That's another point is if you wouldn't want someone to cram a lot of really small bedrooms into a space trying to maximize. Rental or create some kind of rooming house type of situation and all these situations where. Just trying to make sure there's not too many people in a structure, you know, that it becomes unsafe.
I just wanted to mention that in case anybody was wondering where this kind of came from.
Yes.
And thank you for that, yes. Not seeing any uh further commentary or objection to how it's written, I believe we can probably. Move forward as presented and.
Introduce at the next meeting?
Yes.
Eric, do we need to include language in the ordinance itself as the referral to Planning Board or that's just customary?
Really, they let me play with it. Um, normally, any change in zoning ordinance were required to be reviewed by the planning board in between. Reading one and reading two. So I would simply suggest, I don't know how the planning board is scheduled, Terry, you might want to take that into consideration. An introduction in terms of when second reading will be because a board has thirty-five days to.
So an, an agenda has not been distributed yet, but the next. Meeting that would be scheduled with the planning board, with the land use board, uh, would be next Wednesday. Not this, yeah, the seventeenth.
Yeah, this would have to come after. It would, so the thirty-five day period does not start. Until this governing body introduces, so if you were introduced on the twenty-second, the land use board would have up until. The twenty-seventh of May to render a decision one way or the other. So I'm just pointing that out for Terry's point of view. We normally tend to do these relatively quickly, so I don't know what the planning, the land use board.
Yeah, May, May fifteenth is planning board, so.
All right, he's probably looking at the second reading and uh second.
Meeting in May.
Meeting in May.
May twenty-ninth because of. Right, so we'll work on that with time.
All right.
Thank you, Matt.
And I think it was called for your work.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Justin.
All right, and unless there's anything else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, I just wanted to, um, I think Tom mentioned that Lily was there. She's still there. I wanted to mention that Lily Atkinson earlier in the year came before the council. Um, to state her case regarding crosswalks needed on Liberty and as Tom reviewed in the budget tonight. Um, Tom worked with the departments to evaluate that request from the police department and everyone. And then it went through the budget process and it is in tonight's budget that's been approved, so just wanted to thank. Lily for bringing that to our attention and for modeling and demonstrating how changes can be affected by anyone in the community.
And thank you very much for that. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, entertain a motion to adjourn at a seven thirty-six or three, I should say.
Second to that motion.
Second, all right. Uh, we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Have a good night.